I recall the meeting of June 21st, 2017 for the Mashpee School Committee Business Meeting to order. Our starting with business is the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is public comment.
I'm going to talk and then you can talk.
Okay. Are we going to do that as a public comment?
No. This is an agenda item.
Oh, you have an agenda item. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm going to just try to quickly read a letter here that I received earlier this week from one of the staff members. It was addressed to Mrs. DeWor.
Is your mic on?
Your mic isn't on.
Is it?
The mic's on. We don't have the speaker on right now.
Oh, okay.
Because I have some letters under acknowledgements. Is that that one?
Uh, this one?
Yes, about Principal Bellstracci.
No.
Oh. No, no, I wasn't going to read that one. You can do it then.
All right. Let me continue.
Sorry.
This was from one of the teachers. Teaching this year at Mashpee Middle High School was a real eye-opener. I have taught in two other school systems and have friends in many more. Mashpee is something special, an island of sanity in today's turbulence world of public education. I cannot speak for all of your schools, of course, but my experience under Principal Mark Bellstracci and Math Department Head Kerry Brody was exemplary. One otherwise unremarkable event illustrates the health of your organization. While walking around during one of my classes, I turned to notice two people who entered through a back door connecting the classrooms. They observed for a while and moved on. Later I learned one of them was the superintendent. In other school systems, any contact with the superintendent might result in questioning, sometimes repeated questioning, by the department head and principal. Individually, just as any discussion with the principal might be followed by questioning by the department head. In Mashpee, it went without comment. The hidden message to me was one of a high degree of trust and confidence between in amounts administrators and teachers. It reinforced an opinion of your leadership I formed early in my Mashpee experience when I discussed a problem with Mr. Bellstracci. He said he would bring it to the superintendent's attention, while in some school systems it might end with this lip service. In Mashpee, it was actually dealt with quickly, effectively, and completely. Most educators are initially bright-eyed idealists seeking a vocation. Too often they end up as disillusioned employees. Now, when I encounter them, I have great counter example I can discuss from personal experience. Thank you for your role in providing an environment where I can be the kind of teacher I had always hoped to be.
And that gentleman was a long-term substitute for a math teacher who was out of maternity leave, so it's not an easy position to step into.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Each of you should have gotten a copy of that. I didn't want to recognize a copy.
All right. Got you.
Next item is recognition of June 30th retirees.
Yes. Okay. So, we have three retirees that are actually ending on June 30th. One of our guests could not join us tonight, so I'm going to talk about her first, and then we do have two of our other special staff members with us. I just wanted to acknowledge Robin Phelan. She is retiring from the Coombs School where she has been an occupational therapist for... She started in Mashpee in 2005, so she has 12 years here with us. Overall, she had three and a half years before she joined us, and we wish her well on her retirement, and we will miss her, and there is something. Are you going to read that or are we...
So, we have received a citation from the House of Representatives for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Be yet hereby known that to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Robin Phelan in recognition of 12 years of dedicated service to the Mashpee Public Schools and our entire community. Enjoy your retirement. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Signed, Robert Del Rio. And offered by State Representative David Bierra. Congratulations.
I'll make sure we get those again.
That goes to Robin.
Next, we have Anne Giugio, who is retiring from her position at the Quashnet School where she's been a STEM teacher in her more recent years, prior to that a third grade. So, Anne joined the Mashpee Public Schools as a substitute teacher in FY '91, so that would have been school year '90-'91, and she continued to substitute for one more year, and then in school year '92-'93, she became a teacher. And she has a total of 27 years in the role as an educator, two years as a substitute, and 25 years as a teacher, and she will be greatly missed when she... Although she's coming a little bit for Camp Falcon. Come on up, Mrs. Giugio.
We do have a citation for you from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. Citation here, be yet hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Anne Giugio.
Giugio.
Giugio, pardon me. In recognition of over 26 years of dedicated service to the Mashpee Public Schools and our entire community. Enjoy your retirement. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Signed, Speaker of the House, Robert Del Rio. And offered by State Representative David Bierra.
Nice.
We also have a plaque up for you, so congratulations.
We have a lovely, produced in Mashpee, nice cup that has your use of service on the back, and this is also the representative's. Okay. And finally, we are losing our most veteran staff member. Who's going to stand up, Dottie, at the convocation who has the most years of service? Come on up. So, Dottie Harper began working in September of 1981, part-time, and if... We have attached here a letter that has Sandwich Public Schools at the top in the fancy stationery, and typed below it says Mashpee Public Schools. That was when we were combined. So, Dottie began working part-time as a special needs paraprofessional and in a position shared by Mashpee and Sandwich, and then she became a Title I, Chapter I parapaper Mashpee in September of '82. And 36 years of service in total is what Mrs. Harper has given to our students, so we're very grateful. Your citation, dear.
I have a citation here from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. Be yet hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Dorothy Harper-Dottie in recognition of over 35 years of dedicated service to the Mashpee Public Schools and our entire community. Enjoy your retirement. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Signed, Speaker of the House, Robert Del Rio, and State Representative David Bierra. Congratulations. And the plaque through the wall, so thank you.
The plaques were also made at Mashpee. Thank you. You both can come back. You know, we always, for some reason, need substitutes.
Volunteer.
Volunteer, that's good, too. Can you read to the children?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we won't take it personally if you'd like to go on this lovely evening. I know this is stimulating, but you might want to leave and go outside. Thank you both for coming and for all that you do.
Thank you so much.
You'll be missed.
Good night.
Good night.
Next item of business is state of the network presentation by Sean Maroney, Colleen Terrell, and Susie Hux.
So, Colleen Terrell is at a class, so it's...
Sean and Susie.
Susie, is that on?
Hello? So, put your packet in. Run through basically just a review of 2016-2017, delight and then stop me at any time if you have any questions about anything.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Can we get you to move the table up a little bit closer?
Let's just form a circle.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay, as I said, if you have any questions, just stop me at any time. So, I'll start with the infrastructure. This is basically the nuts and bolts of the network. It's all the wiring, the wires, the switches, the actual software on the servers, pretty much everything to manage that system as well. So, this year we replaced, we have seven core switches. There's four at the high school, two in Quashnet School, and one in Coombs School. We replaced all those with updated faster networking switches. We had 10 100 switches, the new switches are 10, 100, 1,000, 10 gig. So, the speed internally in the networks between the servers and the desktops basically jumped up about 10. Through this process, we've reduced a lot of congestion in the network by basically segmenting the network, kind of like dicing up the building so that if there's any problem happening in one section, it won't affect the other sections. Probably more important at the high school where it's divided up into four pieces. Here at the Quashnet School, it's divided up into two. The Coombs School only has one switch, so there wasn't much division other than between the two of us. All the electrical outlets in all of the closets were put on generator power this year, which was a very large process, running the cables, the extra electrical work on the town. They stepped right up and did this to basically ensure that newer equipment would be protected and also stay online during the power issues. To that effect, we also brought new unupgraded power supplies, which basically is a giant battery that will hold the system online if there's a temporary loss of service, so the system doesn't just go down instantly and take time to restart. There were new wireless exit points, about 30 of them, putting it at the high school, just to start picking up on areas that were a little weak in the coverage issue. The server assessment is underway. I've hired an outside company to come in and look at these servers. We currently have 15 servers. A lot of them, probably I'd say eight or so are aging servers. We want to look at a path to utilize the newer servers better, probably through virtualization. You know, just give me some kind of idea of a path to scale down the amount of servers and better use the newer technology. Our local Microsoft Exchange Server, we probably retired this summer. We've moved all of our email into cloud using Google services, and our online student registration and demographic updates are starting to process better. What we did is moving away from the paper that's sent home every year to balance an online process, and the updates automatically update our student information system. Any questions so far? Chromebooks, they're our primary tool for the students and teachers for engagement. We've increased grade three through six here to a one, from the two-to-one program to a one-to-one program. The devices all stay. They're stuck in their little houses, and there's basically one for each classroom. They don't go home to the kids. They do travel from class to class, but that's about the extent of the movement. And we've created a two-to-one program, grades one and two, for PC Cooms. We're having a little resurgence of iPads. The new Apple software that is very cumbersome to manage them is actually, it's working a lot better now. We can now push and pull apps kind of at will, and any device that goes down, we can actually remove the app without having to repurchase a new app due to their new licensing structure. We're probably going to take another look at the iPads over the summer to weed out any of the old ones. Probably the biggest problem that we've always had with them has been space. We belong to a lot of apps. They move from app to app during the teaching process, and they're the older model, so they just fill up. So, we're going to look and see where we can utilize the ones that are still in working condition a little bit better, maybe move them to, because they don't need to be actually, just stop and work.
I have a question.
Yep.
What generation are the iPads and Chromebooks?
The Chromebooks vary from G3 to G4, and I think the newest ones might even be G5. The iPads are mostly, aside from, I think, 20 that we just purchased, all iPad 2s, not even the years.
Thank you.
Computers, which are the primary tools for all the teachers and staff, basically we just replace, we care how good those as it comes. I'd like to start a refresh program through school. The place that it's pretty pricey right now, but I'm looking at other vendors and trying to release the new things and look at recent options as well. Hopefully over the summer we'll finalize that kind of process for that.
Excuse me, I have another question. How many laptops do we own in the district? Is it hundreds or is it...
No, no, it's probably under 100. I couldn't really tell you because we must have been in repair right now. The system used to be if you had a projector, you also had a laptop to be right next to it. My next thing is we're replacing all those and decommissioning the laptops to go with this type of projection system and/or projection system that can connect directly to the teacher's PC.
Wow, okay.
So, we'll kind of get that middle man out of the way, which has kind of always been an extra piece of equipment for extra failure in that process.
So, you're phasing the laptops out, then?
Yes.
Okay.
We installed a new cafeteria projection system at the Coombs School. We are still in the process of upgrading cafeteria projection here at Quashnet and the high school, got their projector and their screen replaced. We're working towards redoing the sound system.
Good question. So, as we're replacing the projectors and the smart boards, what's happening with those? Are they being repurposed? Are they being...
The smart boards and the Eno boards, I get a $400 discount if I trade those back to the company. So, I've been doing that at $400 off the price of the system. And the laptops, we basically just take that and strip them and whatever we can use out of them to get the next one over.
Okay. Thanks.
So, next year, I'm looking at a new solution for the way the internet runs here at the school and also our wide area network. The wide area network is what connects our buildings together so that we have communication back from the servers. Right now, we have two T1s. It's basically a three meg server. And with this building, the past two months have been horrendous here. Either one or two of the circuits have gone down at this point. A lot of it's due to rain, a lot of it's due to the cable plant between here and the central office of Verizon. So, I'm looking at, we have fiber to all the buildings. Talking to a company right now that might be able to offer a solution to do fiber in between the buildings. I don't have the pricing yet, but that process needs to happen. We need to move off of those T1s because it's not fast enough, and at this point it's not reliable. We're going to go around and we replaced our antivirus. We're going around updating that over the summer. We're looking at migrating some of our network security appliances. We use Barracuda for protection in the system, and we're looking at some places where we can use some of their... Barracuda now offers some cloud services. We're looking at getting rid of the appliance and/or given hybrid solutions to start moving that platform offsite. I already mentioned retiring the Exchange Server, which is a newer server, which can be used for some months. Capital Improvement provided some money to add some cooling systems to all the closets. The high school, the only closet that has air conditioning is the main server room. The three-alpine closet doesn't have anything. There's nothing here in Quashnet. Casey Cooms has a courtroom in it right now, but that's... So, they were kind enough to provide some funding to... And we're trying to expand the distribution of the data in our system. So, Power School is the main clearinghouse for all of our data for students and staff, but we have all wires, STAR, Lexia, the health systems now. And we're trying to find ways so that we don't have to constantly manipulate the data between the two, whether it's through importing and exporting files or just manually reintermating data from different surfaces. We started that process with the STAR data. It was kind of a bumpy, it was a very bumpy beginning, but it's kind of evened out, so that process is going forward.
I guess a question for you. Since we moved the email system to a cloud-based application with Gmail, have you looked at the possibility of other applications going to a cloud's service?
Well, what we did is we did, we decided not to host our own management system, so we use all Google services, so all of that is in the cloud. The, right now, the price is a little prohibitive for moving Power School out to the cloud, but I also want to make sure, I don't want to kind of put the card aside, of course. I want to make sure our thing that services and a couple of the services are in place that are more reliable before we start moving stuff and what's up. I looked at Power School, which is our main condition service. Aside from Power School, we really don't have any other services internal. Our, maybe the POS machines, but usually that's not a big service that everyone will go for that I would have a good one.
So, what are we running on all these servers?
Basically, just the domain, the domain services and hard drive, you know, disk space shares, which we're still in buses and moving up to Google Drive. So, once that's done, we retire all the other servers. And this is why I had that survey done, so they know which direction we're going, and they can tell me, okay, we retired this server and this server. That's I can afford, I can eliminate these servers. And our antivirus runs locally as a platform server.
So, once we eliminate these servers, do we still need to have these air-conditioned network rooms?
Yes, because the, sort of the nuts and bolts, these switches, you know, they go anywhere between 48 floors and all the general people.
Okay.
Yeah. Like, for instance, there's no servers in the fire closet in this building, but it still has the switches and the phones which are still...
Okay.
When you say cost prohibitive, I mean...
Right now, it costs us around $8,000 a year. Their lowest end is $15,000. So, the server's new, if it was an aging server, if you threw in the cost of having to buy a server, then it might not be as much. But the server, I don't know if it has any problems with that server, so.
But as I recall, and maybe my memories in regard to the specifics are incorrect, but I thought we had some problems over the last year where we had servers go down and people were unable to access data, or we had to re-bail data.
Yeah, but those were the file share services.
Okay.
And that's why we're moving to the Google Drive to the new servers.
So, we shouldn't have that issue in the future?
We should not have that issue in the future. As long as everybody migrates to the Google Drive.
So, yeah, right. So, you're getting a quota of 15 grand just to basically host Power School?
And all the services that we do.
Right. I assume that's only one company, though. It does seem quite expensive. Per year, 15,000 per year for unlimited users and like, including like share folders and everything for all the teachers or...
No, there's no shared folder. This is just our student information. It just houses all our student records, and then they take over all the upgrades and they do all of that.
Right. Because everything else will be on Google Drive?
Yes, all of our shared folders will be pushed over.
And they do all the backup for that, too, as well?
So, Google does all their own backups, and we have access to those backups. Power School will do their own backups, and they will light up some backups.
Does Google cost money as well?
Google doesn't cost us anything, which is one of the reasons why. Now, eventually that might change, but now it doesn't cost us anything.
So, I was going to say roughly, how much space does each teacher get?
I believe as far as email space, it's normal.
I mean, like share folder space?
And it's probably around the same.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I'm interested to talk more about your kind of document management plan and stuff like that in the future, so.
You have the drive space I don't know.
So, and I know this is getting a little bit maybe too much in the weeds, but, you know, it's my understanding if we were using a third party, then all the redundancy and everything is dependent upon them and they provide it. What level of protection are we providing for in-house applications and...
So, we have a disk to disk server that backs up all the servers. We basically take the image of the servers and it's fantastic, so we have that protection.
So, we have a single copy backup?
We have a single copy with a backup that every six months I'll hold archive and put it on disk. Which is not probably the best solution, but it is a solution at this point. So, once all the drive migrations happen, and then I get better work at my servers, all the key data servers, you know, and hiring, all the better idea of how much space, which was one of the services Barracuda had, which is a hiring solution, we have clients here, they can back up to their cloud and have a key to access.
Okay. Go ahead.
I have one more question. So, just because I want to understand the wind. So, right now, the backbone for the, all the servers is on three megabits?
That's correct.
Whose idea was that? That's interesting. That's super small.
It is super small. It was the only solution we had at the time.
That wasn't a point-your-finger, being a jury thing. I was just curious. Yeah, yeah, something more to it, yeah.
That's probably okay. The reality is, the amount of traffic that travels between them is usually small files. If someone were to download, you know, 200 meg files from the server, if you don't have, that would start creating some issues.
Well, I'm thinking of things that, so you, what's the name of the software that we're doing, that we're housing all the data?
PCG.
So, we got PCG now, which is probably going to be a heavy user of resources.
But that's web-based, too, so they don't travel that circuit. Each building has its own internet connection, so that's how I manage that small server.
Yeah, got you. Okay.
A lot of that base stuff, just we build.
And Power School, when everybody in the entire three schools is using Power School at the same time, before?
Yeah. Power School leads the building. Some of the things were through the building, but the teacher, they put the setup was outside.
So, is the Power School server in-house?
Power School server is in-house. The problem we have with the... The problem we have with the bandwidth on the Power School server is the downward bandwidth on that server. So internal, you know, we don't have 100 meg out, but on that circuit, Power School can only take so much in, because it's very hot.
And I have one more thing, I'm sorry. So you're talking about VoIP. So do we have VoIP phones or no?
We're not using the VoIP, we're actually, we're using VoIP as a transport, but the phones themselves are regular and on inside.
Has there been any discussion about moving to VoIP?
You know, the switch is capable of it. Internally, there's no real reason to do it at this point. VoIP is what I'm looking at for the overall WAN solution, because then that makes sense to change sometimes.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. Only because we've signed the phone bills and it's pretty excessive.
We're spending, I think, over $100,000.
$120,000 for phone services. I find it hard to believe that a VoIP would be even near that much money.
It probably wouldn't be. That's, but that's not just technically the phone, that's also the data as part of it, too. Because it's technically MPLS, which is multiple protocol. So it doesn't resand the data over that, that thing.
Well, I think we're talking two different things here.
Well, they're both combined.
So I think we were talking here potentially investigating replacing the current, what is it? I think it's Verizon phone service with a voice data service. A voice over internet protocol service.
Yes, you're talking about replacing one of the T1s, which is currently that sort of data service, which are very expensive.
I was curious if you discussed that, because it seemed like you could get a dedicated, what is it, point of service? Internet line, it's probably 50 megabits for much, much cheaper than $120,000. Okay, just curious, thank you.
Chromebooks, so we're fine with the administrative setting. We have a company that's putting in space for every setting in home admin, taking a look at best practices and.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And we're going to look at implementing, the Gmail retention services are good, but I want to look a little bit more into that. I've been working on this for the summer to find out exactly how long we can keep the retention services in the process for that. Because we have to keep all our email for several years, which right now we have a lot of space. I'm sure it's a limited space to keep those pieces of files. And then, you know, assess the re-threat policy on Chromebooks. Right now, what we do is we purchase the remaining balance of, when the sixth graders move up to seventh grade, we collect from the 12 graders, whatever the class size that was, we'll towards, towards the seventh graders. But those, those Chromebooks are starting to get old. So we'll probably look at not next year, but a year after, every new incoming seventh grade class, we're getting a fresh, a fresh model of Chromebooks to that classroom, whatever the.
Do you know where the best practice is as far as refreshing?
I've seen some, some places that are like a four-year lease and that's it, they're just, they're just. So I'm, that's one of the things I'm looking into. I haven't had an information update, it's part of what I'm looking at for my change in the company. And whatever most everybody's doing, that we're, that we're, that we're, that's the most, the business aspect. We haven't been able to fix them ourselves, to get rid of our problems.
Is there, I mean, when you say that they're getting old, is there something that they're unable to do? I mean, has technology moved that far?
We aren't here.
Just weren't here?
Just, yeah, just.
Okay.
And iPads, just do a, do a new inventory and a couple of those. Any other questions?
So I guess it'd be interesting to see what your refresh recommendations are going to be, obviously from both the appropriations standpoint and also whether or not we want to be approaching the town in order to capital funding for the program similar to what we do for some of the town departments or even the top appropriations for new leases and purchases. But without knowing what it is we would be asking for, it's kind of hard to approach it.
It would vary with your year. I mean, if you took all the incoming seventh graders, the class size, that would be about the same as the purchase. So that could be about 125 plus or maybe 2 plus, so.
Well, that's true, but on average, and if I'm replacing a third every year, I'm, you know, I generally know about a third of my aggregate is, right?
In that case, it would be a fifth, that's like seven to twelve.
But that's replacing on a five-year basis, so.
The elementary schools would definitely have a different schedule. They're not going to hold it out.
And the one good thing is we're part of a self-host IT group where we've been starting to collect data from all the different towns and what they have for 21 programs and what they're doing about purchasing for our recently. So that spreadsheet is starting to come together for many different, so it's helpful for us to be able to look at it. So that's something actually that's just been happening over the last couple of weeks. So that'll help to accomplish things as well. Anything else for Charlotte?
So you have a statement and sort of a recommendation. So for one, I'm a little surprised and shocked that you were able to get what we need to get done with the equipment that we have. So good job with that. I was surprised to see some of this stuff. You know, the other, the other piece I would say is maybe a recommendation is when you do have the audit done or whatever you're getting done with the services, to maybe kind of price out some of the services that you're going to get rid of. Price out like an estimate of what it might have cost the district to replace those. So that way we can have like a total, and that way we can compare it to what the cloud service is going to cost. You know, we can see if it's at least comparable, even though it's a much, much better idea to go cloud-based, no doubt. But at least just to kind of put apples with apples and see, you know, what we're dealing with here. Is it much more expensive to go cloud, even though, you know, it's better to replace the hardware if possible? Especially if we're going to, you obviously need a bigger pipe if we're going to go.
Boy, if you knew a cloud-based.
Cloud, so.
Yeah, yeah. And not to mention all the stuff that you mentioned as well. I mean, the, we can talk document management, you know, document management and the retention of emails. I mean, all that can be bundled into one cloud-based solution, you know, so it's kind of nice. You can't really put monetary value on it, but you can say that the redundancy jumps up tenfold or whatever.
I think, you know, that might be better, because I mean, I know what service costs, but, you know, not everybody, when we're talking about this stuff to the public, you know, they don't know that service can be very, very expensive. So it'd be nice to see that side by side with Power School.
How much, just for my application, how much time do you guys spend in order to maintenance of the applications and the infrastructure versus development, education of teachers, et cetera, in regard to being able to utilize the systems?
So the base systems or the operating systems on computers, we don't really provide a lot of training on that. Because they use them mostly applications that are based, so. And any of the special programs or PCs, STAR, we can platter decently from. As far as the education piece, Susan probably talked about this for that, because she's out in the field doing a Google training for the staff. So the equipment, every summer we go through all the labs and all the computers, trying to get all the updates on and clean it off. The servers, once a week, we check, make sure, you know, a couple of updates are done. Major upgrades for current time, during vacations, that's a partial upgrade of major operation. So there's no hard schedule for that stuff. It's pretty much when they say, okay, 10.2.5, so we'll look and see what benefits coming out of that. I can wait for the summer when we need that right now. Moving to the Google platform, thankfully, with the software and what they're doing, things will change. Google has very trained, they're trained, they're trained by the right.
And to flip on the other side, I'd say Colleen and I have a lot of responsibility when it comes to taking care of Chromebooks. So if there's something that's gone astray with them and either they're frozen or they're not coming on correctly, then we have a lot of tricks that we can do to fix them. So Colleen and I pretty much run it out of all through schools. If a screen breaks or a keyboard goes, then we ship it off to Holly and she fixes it. We're not sitting down with screwdrivers in our office, but we are often helping students or teachers so that they can get back online. If there's things about them that aren't fixable, but they're not, responsibility of a break or something that's happened and it needs to be returned to Hewlett Packard to be covered under warranty, then that's something that we also do, so we have the shipping out of the box. If the box is coming back in, that'll give them back enrolled in the system and back out into inventory. So there's a certain amount of backup that's on. And teachers still look to us to help them with regular technology glitches, you know, and luckily, we both have that skill to be able to jump in and help. If it's something that we can't get to, then it's usually something they'll put into our request system and Holly gets to it or Sean gets to it, and so Colleen and I aren't bogged down by it. So that frees us up to be able to do PD work, to work with teachers, to go in and help with classrooms. So if I were to make an estimate as to how much is instruction time, if I'm not in a better word, if I categorize it, and how much of it is like troubleshooting? I'd probably say 20% troubleshooting, 80% in classes. So, and that just varies, it depends on who grabs us in the hallway or what building we're in. The high school kids can't get us if we're at PCC, so it's just sometimes a lot of trouble as well.
Is there anything you think, either of you think you need that can be ordered by June 30th? The money's going to be a lot tighter next year, so if there's something you think you need now. Okay.
College boards for Chromebooks, that all comes out.
Okay.
Other person to ship boxes? Are we all second?
She has her part.
So Colleen isn't here tonight, she's having her tech in the last class. Colleen and I have done a lot of college work this year. She's been in a program at Curry and I've been in one at Bridgewater, so that we both have our supervisor director license and Colleen will also have her principal license. So that's been something that we've been doing since last January. Both of us are finishing up basically this month, so that's where she's at tonight. And then we've also, all of us have taken some classes through Google. So the admin, being able to do the admin panel, Colleen and Sean have been able to do that on week two next year. Colleen and I have both done the Google Certified Educator Level One and Level Two courses, which I was saying to Patty, it was a treat to be able to go to a training that really used our own skills, because it pushed our knowledge of the system and it was, it was an awesome opportunity. And so it makes us more adept at being able to manage all of the tools through the software. They were testing us on everything from how to use YouTube to how to use Google Research. It was, it was a very comprehensive program, so the test was difficult and it definitely pushed our, pushed our envelope, which we liked. Some of this is repetitive, so I won't go through all of it, but we've been working on all different professional development models. We've continued with our Google Classroom online modules, so that teachers can sign in and they can find a class or a module that works for what they need to learn next, whether it's learning how to use Google Slides or how to use formative assessments. We've created, I think we're up to 17 or 18 different modules, that all of them have that same format of an appetizer to fill in their background information, a main course that gives them the meat and potatoes of that topic, and then a dessert that kind of either extends their thinking or is just a fun addition to that topic. We've also been going in and helping during, we call it bits and bites, so we're going during lunchtime at the different schools and have a shorter topic where teachers can come in and get a quick demo on how to organize their Google Drive or how to take a look at planbook.com. So we try to do those in smaller doses. We do a lot of one-on-one, so teachers will either come in early, stay late, give up their prep or have lunch with us and we'll sit down one-on-one to be able to use their skills. And depending on the teacher, some of them are those real reluctant learners who are a little bit nervous to ask in front of their PD or PD session. But when you sit down and you work with them and you build those relationships and you start to see what their abilities are, you're able to push them a little and their confidence builds, so we love being able to do that. We've been able to work with the office staff, the parents, we've done substitute trainings, we've done some trainings for parents, so it's been nice to be able to run the gamut of all the people that we've been able to help during the year in our community. We've been seeing the skills of the teachers increase, everything from, it could be as simple as being able to take a picture with their phone and get it up to their Google Drive. Sometimes that's a challenge for someone, and we support that, because for them it seems daunting. And it can be all the way to encouraging them to present at conferences. We're working on nudging them, we're writing out a presentation at a national conference, because we believe what they're doing is amazing and they might not know that, because they haven't seen what else is out there. Maybe they'll have to see that a lot. Let's see, Colleen and I did a lot of presentations this year, we thought we would share those with you as well. Sometimes we present separately, sometimes we have our own little show together, and we have a lot of fun being able to share what we're doing in Mashpee. So sometimes it's talking about our professional development modules, sometimes it's about how to increase the use of Twitter in your district. We've done a couple of post-chases, so how to use scavenger hunts as a learning tool. It's been, it's been a neat opportunity to be able to present. We're going to be presenting at ABDSTI in San Antonio next week, which is the largest technology conference for educators in the world. And there'll be 16,000 attendees, so we're very proud of being able to do that in the world. So keep your eye on the Mashpee hashtag. Next week, oh, we have, we've had covers on our Chromebooks this year at the high school, because the breaks, I would say 95% of the breaks that we have happen at the middle of high school and very few happen here, because they stay in the carts, they don't go home. The kids go from class to class, they're generally very careful with them, they keep them closed. Where at the high school, the backpacks are a major culprit of breaking Chromebooks. It seems to be when they're out of sight, they're out of mind. If you sling your backpack on the ground or, you know, sitting against it on the bus or, that's where a lot of our breaks are happening. But we've been able to cut down our breaks by about a third this year with the covers that we had, and Colleen talked them way down to their price, so we were very proud of her. She brought the friends and the covers down by like a half. I don't know, she does it bigger than she does. So we feel, we're excited about that, we think that that made a big difference. And we'll have them on the seventh grade devices when they come in as well, so that will help protect them. Those are kind of our highlights for your questions. So we're starting to think ahead. Colleen's been working really hard on the website. So what we have right now for the website company is they're kind of bought out and changing their whole platform. So she's been working with them for hours every week, trying to take what we have now, clean it up, streamline it, move it over. And so we're getting pretty close to having a new live website. We've encouraged our teachers, instead of using the packaged teacher program that comes with it, to use Google Sites, because it's a lot more user-friendly. It's easier for them to put pictures up, it's easier for them to add pages. It's just so much more intuitive for teachers, especially those reluctant users. So we've been helping. So we've been helping them during PD to be able to set up their sites, and they're amazed at how much easier it is than some of the other programs that we've used in the past. And so those will link directly to our website in the same way that they do now. It'll be seamless to the person visiting our site, but it'll be a lot easier for the teachers to be able to get their sites up and running. This summer, Colleen and I are each teaching graduate level courses. This will be my first. She's done several. She just finished doing two rounds of Anita Archer's explicit instruction that she ran for teacher Sierra Masy. And then this summer she'll be doing the grade seven to twelve group, and I'll be doing the elementary group, and we're both doing technology integration. So we've already talked about how we'll mix them, maybe how we'll swap once in a while, how we can kind of still build that community while keeping their needs separate because it's different needs for teen garden than it is for grade twelve, so we're trying to be able to meet those needs. We're excited about that, and that's true Pittsburgh. Next year, we've decided that, right now we've been just kind of going where we're booked and going where we're needed, and sometimes we see each other, sometimes we don't, but next year we're gonna try more of a concerted effort to have a schedule. So on any given day, I might be at the high school and she'll be at Coombs', and the next day I might be at Coombs' and she'll be at Quash. So every day, each of us will be spending an entire day out of school, so teachers will start to know, okay, if it's Tuesday, that means Suzie's here. If it's Friday, that means Colleen's here. And then we'll be able to figure in appointments and how to better get into classrooms. We're hoping that it increases our visibility and the teachers' willingness to have us come in and help or model or observe or assist in some way with the instruction, because we're feeling that their skills are ready for that next step, to be able to ramp up their instruction and their integration practices. We're working on our digital citizenship curriculum so that we can start throwing that out to them in the fall. We're looking at both, come on, I wrote it down because I knew I was some of the words. I started to say Common Core, and it's on Common Core, on Sense Media. And also, Google has a brand new one out that's called the Internet Awesome, so we're trying to look at both of them and see what works best for our schools, for grade levels. Some of them are better for younger, some of them are better for older, but we really want to be able to have something that goes beyond just that seventh grade digital citizenship class. We feel that it should be throughout every grade level, and not every teacher's gonna have to be an expert in every area. We're gonna try and have different focus areas at different grade levels. So one grade level might be talking mostly about protecting privacy, or another grade level might focus more on copyright, and another one might focus more on online safety. And so it will help them to become experts at what they're responsible for, and over the course of time, students will get a deeper guide into what it means to be a responsible citizen. We had our, we were so excited, we did the screening, well, the screening, but the showing of the movie Screen Aggressors this past spring. I'd say we had at least seventy-five people, I'd say seventy-five is an easy estimate. And we had a lot of great feedback. We had a lot of parents who said they wish they had been able to come, and we had to send it back to the company and only keep it for so long. And we had a follow-up workshop where Chris came, and we had a couple of parents come where we can help them set up their phones or talk to them about their individual needs, but we're really excited to be able to do it again in the fall. So to have the movie come in again and have definitely a bigger turnout for parents who need that help. And it's funny because we've gotten a lot of emails since that night saying, I wish I could've come, can you send me your resources? I wish I could've been there, can you tell me what you do for eight-year-olds? So we love that the parents of younger students are interested, we think that it's important and it's hard early. And we're looking to try to reboot our tech advisory group. We, we had it last year, we didn't really get it off the ground this year, but we wanted to be able to, we want to be able to have this group so we can keep our technology plan more of a, more of a like a living, breathing document for our tech plan, instead of just something that I pull up and look at every couple of months and say, okay, what have I forgotten, or whatever we did forget. But to be able to have those more meaningful, deeper conversations that really touch on what the values are and where we're at, and what is tweaked or changed or different or what new opportunities are there for technology, or what's happening with our Chromebooks, or to be able to have a group that we can bounce ideas off of, and we'd really like to see more involvement with the community as well, not necessarily just parents, teachers, and us. So we're looking for ideas, we're looking for suggestions. We'd like it to be something that's worth people starting when they come. We don't want to feel like we're just bringing them in to just appease them and say thanks. We want them to feel welcome and valued, so that's a big, that's a big point for next year. And then we're looking to keep working on our social media reach. We've had so many people added to our Twitter list, the list of teachers in the district putting things out on Twitter. We think it's awesome. It's something that not many towns can't say that they have the amount of reach that we do. We're amplifying the story of what's happening in Mashpee from every grade level. You can look online and see that we have things going on in pre-K all the way up to grade K and everywhere in between. So being able to not only have teachers amplify our message, but to have parents and community members seeing that. We're hoping to have more classes, we're hoping to be able to really use more than just Twitter because it's not everybody's bag, but we're starting to see how we can use Facebook and how to use Instagram and to kind of broaden that, that reach, because we can't get everybody with from there. So we're always looking at this stuff to heat that up. So that's what I'm excited about.
You want to have any other questions?
Sure. Thank you.
So, just a, a couple quick ones. Do you have any sense of how many teachers are using or setting up individual websites for their classrooms?
That's a great question. Right now, we've hit the whole high school, and we have a good amount of teachers that have started setting theirs up. Some of them are starting to look at what their old site is, because we haven't took them out of the way yet, there's a little bit of sterity and saying, this is still mine. But some of them have said, all right, I'm done and I'll start building. That's been our biggest builder's at the high school. Here in Quashnet and at KCC, we haven't had the same push yet because we haven't got the opportunity to have that PD. The PD that happened at the high school is really what supported their being right each year on. So we're hoping that we can do that in the fall and really increase their comfort level and get that move over, because it's gonna be so much easier for them.
Okay. The other questions in regard to family and parent engagement, do you have any sense or ability to determine the capabilities within our student families as far as being able to access either the websites that we're trying to set up here for each of the classrooms or other information via the internet?
That's a great question. We are always trying to help our families, especially with Power School, they have a hard time even just setting up their accounts, because it's not a matter of just plugging in your student's name and password. They have to first set up their own account, then they have to know their kid's code to get them in there. So Colleen and I provide a lot of help, sometimes by email, sometimes by phone, and sometimes in person we'll come in and we'll sit right down with them and we'll get them logged on and show them how to use it. With the online registration system that Sean mentioned, we have been available at open houses to help parents to be able to get in and register their students, so we'll set up ten Chromebooks across the counter and help them as they log in, which was hugely valuable because there are a lot of grandparents trying to help with their grandchildren, and there was definitely a barrier when it came to understanding how to get through that system, so we can try to help with that. And similarly, being able to make sure, especially this new website, that it's accessible by people that speak a different language, so having those translation services built into the site should be helpful. But all of my answers still don't reach the parents or the families that aren't asking for help, and that's the part we struggle with, like how do we get to those people who we know need help but won't step forward and ask for it?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm trying to figure out if our penetration is fifty percent, eighty percent, ninety percent, you know, as far as people that can and or do access the Mashpee public schools via the internet from their home or potentially elsewhere.
Yeah, I know, he's from the foster perspective, I could take a look at the statistics on that, I think I could probably see, I'm not sure if by name, but I could get a general idea of how often come to users, I mean, different users are being hit, whether that be students, their parents, and do that sometimes. I could just think of a couple.
Yeah, I'd be curious to, you know, because ultimately, as we continue to move towards trying to rely upon electronic media to be able to communicate with parents, students, families, you know, determining what that gap is, of people that don't have the ability or whatever, or don't utilize it, you know, those are the ones that we'll have to work doubly hard on to either come up with alternatives or to try to encourage them or help them along so that we can utilize that technology.
Sean, I'm sorry, may I ask a follow-up? So you have, you can identify what students have acce, what families have accessed Power School for individual students?
Just not by name, it would just say parent or student.
But it wouldn't be by household, it would be by student?
No. We could just say, you know, this amount of different parents have accessed the school. That's not great.
I have one more question. So, we got to the Chromebooks now, I've heard cases of one of you running down to classrooms when a student might be trying to, you know, break the rules and get beyond the security features on the Chromebooks, but one thing that is a little concerning of mine, I think you might have spoke on it a little earlier, is the potential of maybe doing more to secure the Chromebooks. If not, is that something that's being looked at? Because I know that's a fine balance between making it too restrictive so they can't use it for what the purpose is, but there are some concerns and there are, you know, some loopholes.
We're hoping the, the system is being done, we have a lot of problems, sending over the middle, we just want to actually make it possible.
Yeah.
Also on the, you know, the part of School Guardian, which where we can monitor and react in very time and manage to, and it's for the rod and, and correct it, but not actually being the device. That also extends to us.
I was just gonna ask that, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's wherever the device is, but it could be a floor, it would still be obvious, and those are just the child information protection that's changing. Based on that and the, this could, this could be up to.
We're constantly working with the filters to figure out whether it's that we need to open up the things to access and whether it is that we need to block, like revealing the stories, because there are people creating websites for games all the time.
Yeah.
So School Guardian themselves are constantly monitoring that and adding it to their game category. Sometimes we're asked to go to a guardian, they're like, what is this? And they're like, we don't know, and then they're like, oh, it's a game. So we're constantly getting emails so that we can check and see what the kids have up to and investigate whether or not it's something to be of concern or something that we need to change our filters or something that we need to alert our counselors. It's, it's a great program to be able to keep a full eye on what's happening.
I'm still feedback on the whole Twitter thing, it's working out really well, so I follow a lot of you. I get a lot of my, my good information from you, so.
Awesome, awesome.
You know, we're, we're instantaneous society now, so getting those push notifications from everybody helps out a lot, so.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for coming to my.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thank you.
No, it's fine.
No tweeting, no Facebook.
We don't have to tweet, just, you know.
You wanna talk to me, come to my house. You're welcome, I'll have you. Yeah, please, yeah, no more than one of them. Let's start with, you have more acknowledgements?
We do.
More acknowledgements, okay.
I will read with speed. This is a letter that was sent to Principal LaBelle. Two thousand seventeen was the third year I was graciously invited to be a parent volunteer in a classroom in the Casey Coombs School. Throughout my time as a volunteer, I have strived to see myself as a volunteer first, a parent second, and a former educator last. In other words, though, I certainly wanted to volunteer in my child's classroom as opposed to any other classroom, my goal in volunteering was more to support the classroom I was in than to either keep an eye on the teacher or to watch my child. However, having spent the year volunteering in Evelyn O'Keefe's kindergarten classroom, I felt compelled to write to you through the lens of first, a former educator, and secondly, a parent, and lastly, as a volunteer. The compelling reasons to write this letter, the amazing and wonderful teacher, Mrs. O'Keefe. Mrs. O'Keefe is so fundamentally effective as an educator, this letter almost didn't get written. When you spend your time as a volunteer not looking critically at the what and the how of the classroom, it's easy to take for granted an effective, efficient, and well-maintained classroom. When I volunteered in Miss O'Keefe's classroom, I knew what was needed of me, just as the students know what is needed and expected of them. Her organization was such that my arrival and integration in the classroom was seamless. When working with the students in WIN Centers, which is a what I need center, I knew what I was doing and how to do it before the students came to me. In essence, I did not have to think about what was going on because I knew my role, the students knew my role, and my goal was to simply do the job asked of me. For a while, I cruised through my volunteer experience on cruise control until the day the educator in me woke back up when I realized just how well a couple of students were doing. The next thing I knew, I noticed how well not just some of the students were doing, but all of the students. Then I noticed how respectful the students were, how hard they worked, and most importantly, the growth so many of the students exhibited. To be clear, I get that there is a lot of growth in kindergarten students. It's a time in a child's life when many things click and it's not unusual to see growth. But it's also a time when that growth can be slow and individual behaviors and struggles can exert pressures that hamper growth. Those challenges can be countered by an effective educator in subtle ways that often go unnoticed. I do not want the efforts and talents of Mrs. O'Keefe to go unnoticed. Here are just a few of the reasons I believe she is an amazing educator, in no particular order. Not only does she view all adults in her classroom as teachers, and as a result, all the students do as well, she empowers those adults to be an important part of the education of her students. While this is less important for volunteers, it is hugely important for the effectiveness of her paraprofessional, Mrs. McMorro. Because of this approach, Mrs. McMorro is as valuable as having another classroom teacher in the room. Mrs. O'Keefe is not only cool, calm, and collected, she knows how to host an awesome dance party. Kindergarten students need to move, and the knowledge of when and how to give them the opportunity to move is vital. Whenever I saw her provide a dance break, the experience was enjoyed immensely by all the students, finished in an amount of time that never seemed like it was excessive and never resulted in a loss of control for or of the students. Mrs. O'Keefe's class could have been extremely difficult, given the individual challenges that many of the students have, including but not limited to the student who asked me to please write a letter to their dad who was in jail, the student whose solution to not getting what they wanted was to flop on the ground and not move, to the ESL student who pretty much refused to read aloud, speak, or even smile at the beginning of the year. Several of the students had the potential to drastically affect the overall temperament of the class, yet they never were able to because of the tone established by Mrs. O'Keefe. If you've had the opportunity to see this class and how sweet and respectful they are, it is a direct result of the environment created by a top-notch educator. While I certainly don't want to comment on Mrs. O'Keefe's personal life, it must be noted that she has faced a series of personal challenges over the past months that could have easily manifested into increased absences and/or drop in her attentiveness and composure in the classroom. Needless to say, despite whatever Mrs. O'Keefe has had to deal with in her personal life, it's clear nothing has changed her effectiveness as an educator. When I think of a teacher, Mrs. O'Keefe's friendly, calm, and genuine presence is what I think of. To be fair, I did not spend a tremendous amount of time in her classroom, but in the time I did, I never once saw her get upset, show frustration, and certainly never show anger. Simply put, I was humbled by her presence as an educator. If possible and with her permission, I would like that this letter be entered into Mrs. O'Keefe's professional record. I want my experience as a volunteer and parent in her classroom to be shared with current and future administrators, as well as to be a reminder to her of how amazing of a teacher she is. And that was written by Parent Matthew Auger. And I would concur, Mrs. O'Keefe is pretty outstanding in everything that she does in that classroom. We have another acknowledgement, which is from the District Administration. It says, as you will discover through the District Administration's school, this is a new publication, Schools of Tech Excellence, link below. The Mashpee Middle High School Makerspace has been recognized as a Tech Excellence Honoree for Innovation in Robotics through the National District Administration, sponsored by Intel and HP. Mashpee was one of only, was one of two schools recognized in Massachusetts for this national award, and thank you to Amanda Howe for initiating the submission, and this was given to us by Mike Looney, who's the Director of Career and Technical Education. And then I do have ones that weren't in your packet, sorry to say. I, I have one that was written by the same substitute, it was written to Principal Balistrachi. It basically has the same message, so I don't know that I need to read. It basically has the same message, so I don't know that I need to read that one again. But I will read this one, that it was directed to myself, Mrs. O'Brien, and Ms. Abchess. "I'm sending you this very brief email to thank you and your amazing staff for providing my daughters, Miley and Sadie, with an incredible educational experience. Your efforts, determination, enthusiasm, and admirable professionalism made an environment that produced two young ladies that never lost their enthusiasm for education. Miley soared in seventh grade because Quasna gave her confidence in her academic capacity and a solid sense of herself. Sadie will soar as well. I'm finding myself quite nostalgic as Sadie moves on, and I felt compelled to let you know how much you all mean to me. Thank you for supporting my girls, I am so grateful." You have a, I, Miley Beal, I think I said her name right, Beal, break for three years. Charlie will be joining you in two thousand twenty. He's a handful, and honestly, I would be worried for him in any other district, but I know you will take care of him as you have my daughters. What a gift, you know? You've given a mother a sense of security. Thank you, thank you, thank you. By the way, Mrs. DeBoer, Mrs. Richmond at Casey Coombs is one of the most talented pre-K teachers I have ever known. Thank you for giving our district this amazing woman, and please feel free to share this gratitude with all the staff, which Mrs. O'Brien did, I believe, today. It would be too difficult to email each individual teacher because, as I said, every teacher was amazing. How rare, how special, how lucky we are to have all of you." So, that's a nice one. Yeah. Very good. All right.
Okay. This is supposed to be all, this is supposed to be all Mr. Spock.
We're gonna get us back on schedule.
Yeah, we'll get it back on schedule. First of all, at this time of the year, you know, May first, I, I give the principals, and that was kinda late this year. After that, I said that I did not wanna see any more requisitions coming through, and we kinda look at what we can do to help alleviate, uh, some of the, um, expenses next year, uh, because it's gonna be a very, very tight budget. One of the things that we were able to do out of this budget, out of the appropriating budget, was to pay for the air conditioning at the high school. And that was done through the transportation. We did save some money on transportation, both special ed and, and our regular ed. Even though the regular ed shows a deficit in the, um, in the budget to actual, we did do, uh, we did have a very good year as far as the transportation. You know, transportation, especially special ed, is just a shot in the dark, you do the best you can on what you have for our own districts. Uh, I'm not gonna go through page by page. I, I do have some transfers, basically the transfers, and I don't, it, it's not going to, uh, make all the accounts, uh, from the negative, if there were small amounts, I didn't bother transferring. Because at this time of the year, I only look to the bottom line. We're getting to the point now that we're gonna close out with a certain number at that bottom line. If there's anything that kinda pops out, I'll be more than happy to address it. But you could, if you go to page eighteen at the top, uh, you'll notice that we got a hundred and fourteen thousand, two twenty-five in, um, sped transportation, and that we used to transfer to take care of some of the technology items and the air conditioning at the high school. And we did, uh, uh, we did recop, we recop, uh, we took the carpeting at one of the rooms up and put, I believe tiled down.
Yes.
It was a five oh four.
At the high school?
Um, one of the things that we, we, we really see increasing every year is the McKinney Vento, um, and that, uh, is just very, very difficult to project. Last, in next year's budget, I have sixty-two, um, thousand, budgeted, we'll go over eighty-two thousand this year. Hopefully, we will stay below that.
And is there no, is there an alternative to that?
Well, what happens is we pay it out, and the, the, there is an appropriation for McKinney Vento, and what will happen is the town will get that money.
No, okay.
And what they do is, and the reason they get it is, um, is the, 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 uh, the law says, well, the town gave you that money, uh, to start off with, so there, and it may not be a hundred percent. I don't think it's ever been a hundred percent. We'll, we'll, uh, close out fine this year, we're not gonna, uh, have to, uh, go back to the town for any funds, we'll be closing out in the next week. Um, I don't foresee any, uh, problems. We, we, we did a, uh, payroll, um, today, uh, with the stipends and so forth, so, that one, the stipends always, uh, you know, we kind of leave some funds there to make sure we covered all the stipends. Any questions? We're going quickly. Moving on to the revolving, um, you see the athletic gate receipt, uh, going through the revolving accounts, Athletic Gate receipts, one thousand ninety-seven, they had a tournament, softball, baseball, and all expenses were paid out of the revolving account. Uh, lost book account, uh, self-explanatory, uh, preschool, those are just tuitions that are coming in at the end of the year. We use that money for preschool, um, next year I'll be using that to, um, uh, pay paraprofessionals, um, which we didn't do this year. Facilities rental, most of that money goes on the, into the account, the town has control of that. School choice, I have C attached, and I'm going to talk a little bit about school choice when I get to that. Uh, non-resident tuition, that went up because of the, um, the people, the students from China, we did receive some funds for that while they were here. Um, and then the typical Cape Cod five grants, and, uh, Schools of Career, we did purchase some materials for the Makerspace. Uh, if we turn to the, uh, any questions on the revolving? Uh, you'll notice I do have some, um, transfers, it's basically to take care of, um, accounts that are in the negative, and after May, at May first, what I try to do is I try to ask the principals exactly what George asked a few minutes ago, what, what do you need? And, you know, we kinda sit down at the administrative, or the superintendent will knock on my door and say, can I purchase this or purchase that? And, you know, if we have the funds, that's what we purchase. Uh, you can see a lot of it went to technology, we increased the technology accounts, um, took care of the transportation, uh, volunteer supplies, we had to buy a new, uh, uh, badge. The one that we bought, the original one was a rebuilt one from years ago. I let them buy a brand-new one, not a rebuilt, so it should last the next, uh, ten, fifteen years. Uh, I, I am going to talk a little bit about the school choice, I will make it, uh, quick. Um, on the school choice.
Good talk, the next question. Do you have a question?
I did.
Oh, I need a vote.
We'll do it, we even.
I need a vote on the transfers.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had a comment on that, so we're, we're decreasing the sped transportation line item and then subsequently increasing it. Exact same.
Oh, did I, I put the wrong line.
Yeah.
It should be, um, it should be, um, McKinney Vento.
I'm gonna change your account number.
I'll change that.
Instead of sped transportation?
Instead of sped transportation, twenty-three.
Mr. Font, just wanted to, uh, go back a little bit, 'cause I know we kinda skipped over the grants.
Oh, sure.
And that's fine, we don't need to.
Oh, jeez, no, I don't, I don't, 'cause I have some.
But I did wanna point out, and I'll, I'll let you speak on it, about the Medicaid.
Yeah, I, I, that, that was something, I don't know how I did that. There's a couple of things I wanna, if you don't, I don't wanna steal your thunder.
No, I wanted to actually, because I wanna make sure that, you know, that the people that take care of that, 'cause I know we don't, we're not required to do that, I'll recognize for the amount that we're getting back to the town.
Right, and I'll, I'll speak to that. Uh, uh, first of all, the first thing that I wanna speak to is the Title I. One of the things, Title I, Title II-A, and the, um, ninety-four, one forty-two IDEA, these are twenty-seven-month grants, so we can roll over from one year to the next, and then we spend, uh, what we roll over at the beginning, and we can keep rolling, um, over and over. And, uh, this year we'll be rolling over thirty-four thousand, forty, thirty-four thousand forty-eight dollars. Uh, we'll be paying all of our salaries and all of our, our expenses this year. The thirty-four thousand, um, forty-eight dollars will help next year to buy supplies and, and, uh, whatever else we need in the Title I, so that gives us a little bit of buffer. And I believe we may have some money, um, but I have to wait until we finish the summer programs in the IDEA. So, uh, so we're gonna roll some of that over. Um, moving down, the, um, Medicaid reimbursement received by the town, this year the town will receive two hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. Already in the coffees is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight, uh, and fifty-six cents of that, two seventy-five. We'll receive the rest of it prior to the, uh, end of, uh, the month, June thirtieth. So, that's what will be going back to the town in that, uh, particular account. And, you know, without leaving anyone, I'm just gonna thank everyone in the town that worked the townside that puts this together, the people in my office that put this together to, uh, bring that two hundred and seventy-five thousand back to the town, five hundred and sixteen dollars. How, how long this is going to last? Um, they, they, they keep saying they're gonna do away with it, but it hasn't been in the past few years, but it could be short-lived. And that shows up as general revenue to the town, not to the school specifically, correct? Correct. Uh, well, it's, it's recognized, it's recognized i- i- in the, we get a, I have a letter here addressed to Mrs. Brady, uh, our sped director, uh, because it is for sped services, but it does go, it does go directly back to the town coffees. Right, it goes into the general revenue of the town. That is correct. And not, and it is not earmarked to the school. Right, but it. Just wanna make sure everyone is aware of that. That's correct.
Teaching moment, Paul, it's a teaching.
It's a teaching moment, yeah. Well, you know, very similar to the McKinney Vento.
Yeah.
It goes in, and, you know, it becomes part of the, the big part of money that, uh, that, uh, comes out. Uh, the rest of the grants, we will be closing out, as you see, most of them are expended already. The Indian Ed grant will, uh, will be spent out, we're just finishing up on that one. The Circuit Breaker, June thirtieth, we have one more payment. Uh, and, and what we do is we use this year's Circuit Breaker money against next year's money. Okay, any other questions? And I thank you for that, Mr. Santos.
Yes, thank you.
Um, what? Oh, yeah, I need a vote on the budget transfers. Thank you, Catherine.
Do you have the correct account number then for McKinney Vento? Just coming off the budget line, I don't know.
Yeah. I can get that.
Is it one three three eight nine fifty-six hundred thirty-three hundred?
Yes. There you go.
Then we have every one of these memorized.
You do?
No, you do.
No, I don't.
I definitely.
My staff do.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, I'll get you the correct account. It's, uh, one three three eight nine fifty-six hundred thirty-three hundred. So, I'd like a vote as amended.
Move the set budget transfer seventeen oh nine as amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, we have a question in the road to the increase for the Quasna building maintenance. Is that related to the, um, window roof bathroom project? Yeah, that, that, that was agreed upon. Uh, the, the, um, the increase is just the, that's for that project, that particular project. Okay, I was, I was sure. Any further discussion? Or, um, Nicole, have a vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, moving on to the school choice, um, we, we, uh, we have one more payment, school choice, as you see, the bottom line right now on the revenue is, uh, five eight, uh, five eight six seven, two seven, uh, three, and, uh, we will have one more payment, which will be fifty thousand, I'm, I'm projecting fifty thousand eight twenty-nine, which is made up of one additional payment, uh, plus twenty-five thousand nine ninety, which is the special ed piece that we file every year. It, it's, it's not as much this year as it has in the past, but, you know, that's okay too, so. So, so, uh, we're looking at a total of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and two dollars and forty-nine cents, of which, uh, this is, you don't have this in front of you, I'm just gonna give you, you this information, of which we had three hundred thousand earmarked that we reduced, we took all of the technology, and there were another hundred thousand, there were, we, we, our budget was reduced by four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We took a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which was, uh, preschool transportation, which will not take place next year, so that means we still had three hundred thousand dollars that had to be made up. So, of the six hundred and thirty-seven one oh two, three hundred thousand will be earmarked for basically technology, uh, most of it will go to technology, uh, that will leave a balance of three thirty-seven one oh two, uh, for the rest of the year, for, uh, more or less items that come down the road that we, uh, do not have the funds for. And already, we have, um, we have used of the three thirty-seven, eighty-nine thousand, and that was mostly the Chromebooks that went to the, that are going to the, I believe, the Coombs School, and, um, so, and some software.
Those offers.
Pardon? No, no, it's not listed on here.
Oh, okay.
I don't put it on your list until it's paid for. So, what you're seeing on the payment side is not what the, necessarily the requisition and the purchase order was, it's the actual payment. So, I do have some requis, I have some, uh, purchase orders out there, and, uh, was, uh, one was Hub, and there were a couple of small ones, but Hub was the big one, it was like thirty-nine or thirty-six thousand. And that's basically, uh, my report this evening. Questions? And I'll take, I know I went through, 'cause I wanted to go fast.
Of the five, of the five eighty-six that is listed as the ending balance?
Right.
How much of that is committed the next, is?
Three, three hundred thousand.
Is committed towards our operating budget for this year?
Correct, that is correct.
So, that leaves us, the million that we started out with this year, we're down to two hundred thousand, roughly.
Right, right, and then you add another fifty onto that, because I'm waiting for one more payment, and then we've already expended eighty-nine thousand out of this, you have to subtract that back, and those are things that we, but we, I, I, you know, you can, you can look at that, but I also want you to go back and look at what we've accomplished this year, you know, as far as the roof, that, you know, that we're moving forward with some of these, the windows. This building will look completely different in another couple of years, when the construction is done.
I'm anticipating.
So, you know, just keep that in mind.
Just some time for Coombs?
Yeah. I was anticipating questions, I think.
Pardon me?
I was anticipating questions at my point.
Oh, yep, yep, that's about it. And, and, you know, now we start our choice over, you know, the first payment will come in, I believe, August for FY eighteen, um, you know, that will start to come in, and as I said, that, if we have to offset our budget for FY nineteen, I'm gonna have to look at that, and, and what we're bringing in there, and, you know, and, but, uh, we, we, right now, our FY eighteen budget is, is in the system, it's all balanced, so, uh, we worked it all, you know, we balanced everything out, we made a few changes, um, we, we kind of, what we try to do is, as the teachers move, we try to get the right amount of money in each of the schools, so when we charge it off, we don't have to make transfer.
I would like, you know, at some point, if I named Chairman, and I don't know if we need to talk to it, talk about it as a group during our retreat or at some point, but we, we should clarify, quantify a floor for the school choice money, 'cause it's not for offsetting the budget, it's for supporting the school choice program. So, I mean, we, we should, we should be able to, as a group, figure out that if we get an influx of fifty students into, into Mashpee, how much money do we need from school choice to offset the sixty-seven school choice students we have?
Right, and that, that's basically what you're doing, uh, next year. You're basically taking the revenues that you, that you, uh, made this year, you know, the, the million dollars has come down, and I believe it was this year, uh, projected was, uh, like, three hundred and forty-five, uh, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, uh, projected to come in, and then the sped piece, that small twenty-five thousand, and now we're using that, which is the way the state wanted you to use, use it, to offset those choice students that were coming in, because we're, we're using it within the, within the, the, the. Because we're using it within the, within the whole operation budget.
Well, then we, I mean, we have a philosophical disagreement, because I don't, I don't agree with that. I mean, it's, we sat here and discussed it with the town, and we don't need to get into a huge discussion about it, we can talk about it. I'm just saying, we sat in front of the town, this is exactly what it's not used for.
Right.
To offset a level funded budget.
Right.
It's to be used for unanticipated expenses caused by school choice programs, which is not what we're using it for. That's my only point. We should know exactly, not exactly, but we should know that we're comfortable with having a hundred-and-fifty thousand, this is a random number, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the school choice kitty, we're comfortable with that on an annual, an annual basis. So that we don't spend eighty-nine thousand dollars on Chromebooks, unappropriated, and we go below that floor. I just, we should have a discussion about that.
I understand where you're going. I was a little, you know, I'm just trying to say that the funds that we bring in on that.
I understand, it's a pot of money that we were able to use at this point, but you set that precedent, do that again next year, that money is gonna be looked at every single budget cycle, that they're gonna automatically reduce the budget by.
Correct.
School choice funds.
Correct.
When that's not what they're really used for.
Correct.
So if, you know, if we're able to be very informative about, this is the floor we think we need to have, don't mess with this money.
Right.
I think it's a good discussion to have.
I got it, I got it. Thank you.
Follow-up on that?
Yep. That'll be another.
Any other questions on that? Next item was a, did you have any, have you had any other?
No, no. The other was the school choice.
Okay. Next item is an update on the cautionate facilities project.
So I spoke with DPW Director Catherine Laurent, and the contract amendments have been signed by the town with our owner's project manager, Siva, and with Raymond Design Associates, the architects. The architects have come back down and done some more follow-up work to go into the next phase of their plans, and Catherine believes the sixty to seventy percent completion plans will be submitted to MSBA next. Town council is currently reviewing the funding agreement with MSBA. She expects that in August, that we will have a meeting scheduled of the sort of local subcommittee that works with Siva and, and the RDA people to look at the next phase of plans in terms of any kind of decisions we need to make, and that she feels they are on track for the final bidding going out in early fall.
And everybody's comfortable that we're on track for summer of two thousand and eighteen start, or?
Well, I'm saying spring of two thousand and eighteen. And I picture it where, you know, they, it'll be massively, like, the bathrooms are the bathroom people, the roof is the roof person, the windows are the windows people. They'll all be here at once.
That's wonderful.
That's good news.
Look at positive vision.
We're on track until we're off track.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Probably have the rainiest season ever.
So, you know, we're off track, you know, whatever.
I don't know if you each wanna take one of these and pass it down, that's the next one.
Okay, so next item is in regard to school choice and tuition waivers?
That is right. So you're receiving a chart that has some information about tuition waivers and also blended into school choice. So you have the grade level, and then in the second column, those are currently students that are in our district as a tuition waiver student, so that second column. And then I have our current enrollment as of June nineteenth in each of the grade levels. FY eighteen school choice seats available, those you voted on on the February first meeting, that's the fourth column. Then in speaking with principals, it's more information at the elementary level, but they have sort of known anticipated withdrawals. Students who are not gonna be with us next year, they're either moving out of state, different conversations, going to a different school. And then our current choice applications as of six-twenty, so at each of those grade levels, these are what we currently have sitting in a folder with Gail. And then the next to last column is the number of home rooms, this is mainly an elementary focus, and what their average class size is. And then in the last column are just sort of my recommendations, and there is some codes at the bottom there. So the shaded students in the second column would not be eligible to come back to our school because there is no choice in the grade they're going into. So they definitely would be finished. And the majority of our kids who have choiced in, they started as a Mashpee student in their journey, there aren't that many that are totally newcomers to us. The second bullet at the bottom, wherever you see the plus sign next to some initials, these are current Mashpee students who just moved out of town and did not apply for a tuition waiver since there was only a short amount of time remaining in the school year. So they would, there's no choice for them, but they do wanna stay. So you're either going to say no, or they're gonna come before you and ask for a tuition waiver for next year, which I'm not sure we wanna go, always go that way. Average class size was determined looking at the number of home rooms at the elementary level for next year and dividing by the student count, but you look at the previous grade level, the ones that are moving up. It's a very confusing little chart here, I will just say. In the column where it's current school choice applications, and you can see the numbers, the number below in parentheses indicates kids that are currently in our numbers. So, so we've had, and we didn't count kindergarten, because kindergarten's a little bit of a wild card. So we've received twenty-six choice applications in grades one through twelve. Eighteen of those students are current Mashpee students, and they're included in the enrollment that you see in column three. So the impact of them coming, they're already in there. They were figured in because they, they're part of us.
But they're moving, and they need to do school choice, is that?
They are, they don't, yes.
So the, the six with the parentheses three under, it means three of those six are already in Mashpee schools?
Yes, yes. So, and then if you look at, like, anticipated withdrawals, you will notice on grade eight, from, based on the information, we have thirteen students going to Cape Cod Tech, we have three students going to Pope John Paul, six students each, six are going to Sturgis East, six are going to Sturgis West, one student is going to Dennis Charmeth, and we are aware of one eighth grader who's moving down south. And that is a rather large class, so percentage-wise, it is about the same that we normally use, lose, but it is a lot to me. So then, the last column, and looking, and I have had conversations with principals, it's very hard to, to have a crystal ball and know how this is gonna be, because, you know, in a perfect world, I'd say, let's have, you know, ten or fifteen seats in a grade level that we leave open all year, and that way, every time one of our kids gets relocated and the parent wants to keep them here, we switch them over to choice. But then there's the impact of the move-ins, and I know that I, in talking to Mary Kate, Principal O'Brien, so far registrations for next year, she has three, in grade three, nine students, grade four has two students, grade five has two students, and grade six has one. But in most of the schools, there's generally a flow-in of twenty-five to thirty students in the summer. Now granted, there is a flow-out too, because they move, so it's just really hard. So if you look at that last column, oh, and kindergarten is currently at a hundred and fourteen students, it was slightly off at the last meeting, I think it was reported at one-seventeen, but some of them are moving, according to Mrs. Fisher.
Patty, one question.
Sure.
So I can make sure I'm reading this right. So the, the grade corresponds to the grade they're in now? Like, in other words?
Yes.
My son's going into fifth, so he's, but he's in the number.
One-forty-two.
One-forty-two.
Uh-huh.
So, so you don't have the numbers for the, the totals for next year's grades? Like, or are we just assuming that we'll have a hundred and forty-two fifth graders next year?
Well, so if you look at that line, let's look at fourth grade. I know, if you look at, it's too much, I put too much on one chart, that's the problem. If you look at that, there's currently a hundred and forty-two fourth graders. You have decided to have five choice seats, but Mary Kate has already confirmed seven kids that are going elsewhere. And then there's the choice. So in theory, that one-forty-two is gonna move to fifth grade, and they're gonna be split between seven home rooms and with an average of the twenty per, per class.
Oh, I see, so you gotta jump down to the next line?
You kinda, in order to get that home room size, I know the number of home room teachers, but the number of students in a class is based on the kids coming in, the best that you know, and that's really, we don't know everything we need to know.
And so that's why you're recommending no change there, because we're at seven classrooms with twenty kids?
Seven cla, for next year's fifth grade?
Yeah.
And, and Mary Kate already picked five seats, and she has five kids leaving, so that's kind of a wash there. Like, if she didn't have.
But those are gonna be sixth graders.
Oh, and fourth grade?
Yeah.
Okay, so fourth grade, no change in seats, yeah, right, because she has seven leaving.
Because there's actually a deficit of two.
Yeah.
But, but you're in, you're, I'm just, wanna clarify, I'm sorry. So the next, so you're saying, if I'm following this fourth grade class.
Okay.
For example, you're telling me that next year, there are seven classrooms with twenty kids with the existing, everything we know at this point?
Yes.
And so these numbers on the second to the last column actually correspond to the next year?
The projection of class, of per pupils in a classroom.
For that grade and the next.
Yeah, next year.
Okay.
Yeah, number of home rooms for school year seventeen, eighteen, with the average class size at the top, yep.
Okay.
So, in the last column, so you've already voted for, you know, for the choice seats for this next year, but we're wondering about whether you would reconsider, and we would resubmit to Desi, the changes that are highlighted in the yellow. So adding three additional seats for a total of five choice seats in grade one, adding three choice seats to grade two, of which there currently are no choice seats. Grade six, adding five seats for a total of ten, and that's because it is a smaller group feeding up there, and right now, the number leaving, it's kind of washing, and the class size is a little low at eighteen. So we could probably put a few extra there. Adding five choice seats to grade seven, five choice seats to grade nine, and three choice seats to grade twelve. It is very hard to, you know, anybody applying to be a choice student in grade twelve still has to meet our graduation requirements, and if they don't come sort of at that stage, they may not be the equivalent of a senior, because they don't just get to graduate because they show up as a senior. So we do look a lot at what comes with each of those students. The current student, as you can see, is already here, the junior, and I actually have a letter from his mother, from him actually, because he's old enough, requesting a tuition waiver for next year, because he knows that there wasn't choice. And the other tuition waiver letter we have is from a parent of an eighth grader, and again, she's asking for, to waive the tuition for seventeen, eighteen, so that her daughter can stay here, and she's been here since second grade. So.
So, so I guess one of the thoughts in regard to why we would allow someone's choice for their senior year is because of the fact that we only have ninety-nine?
It is a sma, much smaller number than, right, than the ones that left.
That's quite a fine question, for good reason.
I hope I can.
So the example you used with the fourth and fifth grade.
Okay.
The commonality there was the fives in school choice seats. So I wanna use a different one to kind of answer my question.
Okay.
Because I don't remember every single seat number that we had voted on, back when we had voted on this, if you look at the first to second, so does every column shift down for the incoming seconds with the exception of the school choice seats available and the current choice, I'm sorry, all three of those columns, the known anticipated withdrawals and the current choice, or the known anticipated withdrawals also shift down?
Okay, so the, the FY, the school choice seats you already proved in column four, those are next year.
So those stay with the actual grade level.
So in kindergarten, we have two choice seats.
Okay.
Right. Those stay the same. The known anticipated withdrawals are what we know of, they're leaving now.
Those are first graders that are going into second that are leaving.
Yeah, so if we look at first grade, there are three people that they know at the Coombe School are not gonna be here next year.
For second grade.
For second grade, yeah.
And then the next column is, lines up with the current grade row that it's in?
The next line.
The current choice application.
Yeah, yeah, that, those are, those are kids who have applied for that particular grade.
Right, in that row.
Uh-huh. And this, this, this column does represent what you voted on.
Okay.
It looked like this in February.
All right, I think I got it.
Okay, so my question then, skip into the punchline, is, so it looks like the rec, there are recommendations for four, four areas where we had no seats. You guys are recommending that we add choice seats. But in my, in many cases, those will more than cover, except it looks like we still won't have enough seats in second grade, even though we're at, I can't tell, these four kids, these four students that want in, are they wanting into second grade or first grade?
No, they're, they are currently in first.
Yeah.
As a tuition waived student.
Right.
Wanting to stay to second. That's why the arrow means they're going to go, and there's no choice in second.
And so you're, we can't, and because the class size is already at twenty-one, we're only recommending three seats.
Right.
And so you're, we would have to turn away one of those people.
And I want to, if I may, clarify, and put the comment here, we need to separate the school choice seats from the guys, the individual students who are potentially gonna do tuition waivers. It's two completely separate things.
Oh, yes, you, yes.
So these school choice seats are based on math and incoming and outgoing students, they have nothing to do with the students that potentially would use those seats?
No, and there's no, so in, in the lottery, if you have, there's no guarantee any of those kids are even gonna end up in a spot.
These four students in first are still gonna have to apply for school choice.
Yes, they do.
All four of them, potentially, depending on how many apply, may not get any of the seats.
Right. That's correct, right. It's just, it's an.
He's a mutually exclusive.
Yes, it's an option. Everyone that is a tuition waiver, we need, particularly in those grade levels where they thought there was no choice, we would make sure they knew that there now is choice, but there's no guarantee even in that round. But they at least have a better shot than before.
Do they get an extension, or do they have to apply by the thirtieth?
Well, we would, if you vote on it tonight, we would, Gail's gonna make sure she contacts them tomorrow, and there's no first-in advantage, so they would have, we would have it in by the thirtieth.
So we'd be looking potentially at one lottery, based on the data you have here?
One lottery.
Yeah, for second grade. That's the only place we'd have.
Oh, well, if all four of them applied, yes. Yes. So if, and if you kind of look, in, there is a set of three siblings in different grade levels here. I'm not sure that family is going to try to stay, but the other, mostly the other ones that have reached out to.
How would that be obvious?
Well, they have the same last name.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
No, it's actually, it's actually, actually, no, it doesn't show up the way you'd want. There's only one of the siblings, only one of the siblings of the three can't get choice. But none of them have applied yet.
Okay, gotcha.
All right.
There'll be a test on this later.
Exactly, it'll be a short quiz. All right, I always defer to your.
Yeah, they are.
To the leadership about all the school choice seats, and as long as we're very clear that this has nothing to do with ensuring that.
But they're.
Those folks get a seat.
No, no, no.
I'm happy.
No.
He's just kind of still scrambling my brain a bit, without having a Catholic in front of me, without getting too big of a headache.
Okay.
It's how some of the class sizes with the same amount of home rooms seems like if less students will end up with bigger class sizes.
So, which one are you looking at?
Because this is this number.
Yeah, but even this, plus, even if you add a six, it's one-thirty-two, right?
Six plus the.
It'd be one-thirty-two, which would be twenty-one, so if you've got one-thirty-five here.
That goes on here, right? Seven home rooms at twenty.
Thank you, sir.
Boom, I got it. Just because of Nicole's question, I got it.
He's not gonna explain it.
So the, so the number of home rooms is, so for the fourth grade, seven home rooms with nineteen students is based on the hundred and thirty-five current enrollment of third grade.
Yes.
Plus or minus all the school choice, plus withdrawal stuff.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah. Gotcha. So to your question, Paul, about one-twenty-six in first grade, is. Yeah, okay, okay, yeah. Gotcha. So, to your question, Paul, about one twenty-six in first grade, is less three students? Plus whatever school choice we had. We only have three school choices right now. So like, they sort of wash. So there's only seven?
Raining out there.
Oh, look, that's what I was gonna ask you, I'm sorry. Thinking out loud. Um, when do people typically notify you of their departure?
Oh, families?
Yeah.
All different times.
When people who are going to St. Francis, for example, or-
Oh, those we pretty well know. We can always tell when they shadow. That's a good sign. But normally, the schools request, you know, the records.
Information.
And that's, and then parents do come in and sign, sign paperwork.
So we're only losing seven fourth graders going into fifth grade. I mean, are these numbers, I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of, other than the-
I could tell you, okay, so the fourth graders that, so three of them are going to St. Francis, next year's fifth grade. So three current fourth graders going to St. Francis. And then there are, there's a girl moving to New York, somebody's moving to Bourne, and two other situations related to custody that are resulting in them not being in Mashpee anymore.
And, and so other than the eighth grade class where there's these big numbers.
Right.
Are these numbers typical?
Usually, the biggest outflow to St. Francis usually happens in grade five. This year has a couple of, um, usually when they're finishing fourth grade, going into five. So there's a little bit of a, um, shift there. I think one was waiting for the sister to get to the right age to go, um...
But they seem like low numbers to me.
Well, and of the current six, of the current sixth graders, one is going to Falmouth Academy, actually, two are, two are going to Falmouth Academy and one's going to Cape Cod Academy. And then, uh, somebody bought a house outside of, so that's, that's pretty average. For Quashnet, the biggest loss is always to St. Francis in the fourth to fifth jump. It's never, it's always about four or five usually.
Which is like, just a very small number. Just, I guess I'm surprised, I'm glad, but I-
No, me too. I would have thought it would be larger as well in fourth and fifth.
Well, we heard how great the Quashnet school is. I don't know why anyone would leave or going to the middle high school. All right, so we would need you to vote on our adjustments, recommended adjustment.
I, I guess the last question I would ask is... You know, when you, when you do the math, you know, three seats versus five seats, doesn't create another classroom, just changes one. And basically, um, or, or two of them will have one more than the others. Um, so, given that this is really our last opportunity to make any adjustments, um... Are we, are we confident, I guess, with, at, as confident as we can be with the numbers?
Uh, I think it's good, and I also would recommend that in any grade level where we have choice seats, that the choice seats remain available throughout the year. If they don't all go filled during the lottery block, the two months, because that also would allow us sometimes, when a family does make a shift, if we happen to be left with a choice seat there, then we can just, don't have to tuition waiver. We can move them over mid-year or however, wherever it is.
Personally, I don't know why we haven't been doing that.
Other districts do leave it open because they've helped us when we've had to make a little bit of adjustment for a student.
And just for clarification, then, um, if we, let's, we have three choice seats. For example, in second grade, we have to take three, or we can take up to three?
Up to three.
Up to three.
Well, if you have three applications, you have to take up three.
And, and I do have to do a little research on that because we do look at a complete package. And so sometimes if someone, and Gail does call them and say, "You're missing this or this." But as you get older, sometimes you really do, we're gonna have to do some interviews as well to make sure, um, that the fit is correct. So that, that's where it gets a little glitchy.
I mean, I may be wrong, but from what I understand about the school choice law, if they apply and everything is correct and in line and every, all the paperwork's all set, they, they just have to be allowed in. Uh, if we have three seats and we're advertising we have three seats, and we got three applicants, we have to let three applicants in. If we get two, then-
I think the only part for me is if a high school student is applying for choice for grade eleven, and when you look at all the paperwork, from what you can see, you question whether they have successfully completed grade ten.
Well, that's different. That would be a requirement.
That kind of changes the play there.
Yeah, that would be obviously a great requirement thing. That's a difference. But as far as, as I was saying with the choice, if we, if we approve these numbers, if we get that many applications with no discretion, they have to be, true.
Right.
That was the question, was, was the question.
Yes.
You know, if we advertise, to be fair, if we advertise three, we're gonna have three applications, what, I mean, that, uh, technically would be good.
No, everyone has a fair shot at it because you can't just decide, like I, you know, whether you had six and you only have five slots and you start, I don't look at them. But someone decides, oh, well, no, this one's not, we can't do it that way.
Right, right. If, if there's six applications and there's five slots.
And they're all complete applications, then you just, Gail does that, yes, mhm.
But, I guess, the, the point there is, if there are six applications, we can choose, can we choose to only take four? Can you allow me to take four?
I think you could only go in that direction if you disqualified two for incomplete application.
That's my belief as well.
Yeah.
I do have another question, mate. Maybe Mr. Funk and yourself, combination could answer. So let's say we have three seats as an example again, and they all fill up, and then we have three people leave. And we leave, decide to leave them open all year. Can we backfill those as choice seats in the end?
I, I think you'd have to revisit it with a vote.
Yes.
Because you're basically adding more seats.
Okay. I just wanted to know if they were, are they marked, so those students are marked as the three that we did? And then any other seats that become available are not considered.
They're on a chart for him, yeah.
Okay, interesting.
So you're recommending, I wasn't here, obviously, when you guys voted on the first set.
Yeah, originally.
Why, I mean, it was, was it purely based on the recommendations at that time? Because this is almost a doubling of what you guys knew or voted on in February.
It was based on the recommendations from each principal because they look at, at their school. And, um, I think, you know, obviously, like Mr. Funk always says, with the budget, the further along you go, you have a little bit more information that helps you. And so realizing who is going and was it, whether there's wiggle room and trying to be as student-centered as we can and wanting to help those families that have a very strong desire to stay in Mashpee.
And how many choice seats do we have for the FY-seventeens?
So, um, FY, well, we had seventy choice kids, but the seats, what, we have for seats? Uh, seats for sixteen, uh, proposed seats, no considered ones.
It's something like thirty-seven or something sticks in my head now.
So, so I think we have-
About thirty-seven.
I think we have thirty-nine that were previously occurred. And if I read the note here, it says, so far, we've received twenty-six of which eighteen occurred. So that means eight new students. So thirty-nine minus eight. So we have thirty-one choice seats still available across all grades at this point.
Previously, we did not offer kindergarten as well, by the way.
Right, and, and we do have a rather large, yeah, no, that's, that's a challenge there. Sadly, I have the two thousand fifteen choice seats that we sent in to Desi. Don't have the, of last year's one. But we had seventy last year and we have three seniors who just graduated, so they'll be, assuming no one moved someplace else, we would have sixty-seven.
But that includes current students that have already got, that's not necessarily the school choice seats we voted on, right? So it should be-
That's right, that's right.
Right, because all we voted on was the new seats.
Right, new seats.
Not the continuation of the existing seats.
Ah, I see.
Yeah.
So some of those people will not be, they won't be in this number yet.
They're not involved. They're just in the current enrollment number.
Gotcha, okay. Good clarification.
Well, I move to accept the new updated, um, school choice seats as presented.
A second?
So do we want to consider the, do we open as a separate vote? Or do we want to potentially have it, leaving it open year-round?
Oh.
So do we want to consider that as part of the same vote, or do we want to have a separate discussion?
We, we should have a, um, separate, uh-
Okay.
Separate votes. So we have a motion by Jeff, and a, a second by Nicole, um, to increase the number of school choice seats based upon the superintendent's recommendation, uh, that you have in front of you. Any further discussion? Carry it in, Nicole, what do you vote?
Yes.
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 Sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so it's unanimous and it's been, uh, approved, so we will, um, immediately update, um, the school choice, uh, seats. Um, then I guess, Chris, in regard to, um, your concern or question in regard to, um, leaving the seats open after the deadline, if they are not, uh, being utilized, um...
I personally would like to see that happen, um, now the motion would be, do we want to-
That you would-
School year.
Cause right now, deadline is before apple.
Fiscal year. Fiscal, fiscal, yeah, okay. And I'll make a motion to, uh, change the school choice FY-eighteen deadline from, oh, you want to just leave the deadline?
Well, it's not that, you'd still have the two windows, but it would be that, um, leaving choice seats open until filled for the remainder of fiscal eighteen.
Then a motion to leave the school choice, uh, window open, um, after the first window closes for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, until the end of the school year.
In point of procedure, do, do we need to verify this with the policy first, though? I don't know if we're now voting to deviate from a policy that we probably need to check, because we have a pretty, fairly detailed school choice policy in place.
Okay, so that by May first of every year, we determine the number of seats. That by June of every year, um, if consideration's being given to withdraw from the law, you'd have to decide that resident students may be given priority placement in any classes or programs within the district. Selection of non-resident students for admission be in the form of a random drawing when the number of requests exceeds the number of available spaces. There'll be two drawings for this purpose. The first will take place the last week of the current school year, no later than July first. Second, conducted during the week immediately preceding the opening of the next school year, based on possibility of unexpected additional openings. Any student gets to stay till they graduate. Um, school committee affirms its position not to discriminate. Then we have if, this is italicized though, but if, actually, this says first reading. The italicize, I don't think was ever voted in. That had to do with, well, if a Mashpee resident student has been enrolled in Mashpee for the previous full school year, that, that, we didn't put that into effect. So, let's see if this one is different. Yeah, it ends with, um, not discriminating. Yeah.
Doesn't sound like, um, holding them up would have anything to do with, um, the change in policy.
That's not the way I read it. I read it, it's fine. I'm not on the policy subcommittee, so I'll leave it up to that to look at that. I'm just concerned because it specifically states when the lottery will, will be done. And it's only two times, so.
What you wouldn't be doing, moving forward, like once you do your two lottery or those two windows, then it sits there. And if something comes up and someone from another district asks-
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet and I'll set up. This is a policy change, and a policy change requires a first and second read unless we vote to remove that rule. A minimum of two reads, as far as I'm concerned.
So the policy specifically says that school choice seats unfilled go away?
No, no.
And it wouldn't be a policy change?
No, by making this open all year, this is a policy change. We're changing polit- school choice policy.
Well, we're saying we're gonna fill, we're gonna leave them open until filled.
Mm-hmm.
Which-
Right, but the, the way it is right now is based on the lottery. So the only date that's, it's specific there is-
The two.
Is June first, right?
Well, no, the first one has to be by, by, before Ju- July first. By the end, the last week of the current school year is the first window closure.
Right.
Well, I am merely the secretary, so if, uh, if that's the democratic decision by the committee, that's fine, but-
The way I'm reading it and understanding it, because I know, I know exactly the code for it, the way I'm understanding it is that we are still implementing the policy. We're just adding to it by saying, okay, once the policy is done.
Right, we're changing the policy.
No, I, no, I get what you're saying, but the way I'm interpreting it is that we're, we're just adding onto the existing policies.
I'm done, I've said my piece.
So let's, let's, let's do this. We don't have to decide this tonight.
You don't have to do that.
Let, let's refer this to our policy subcommittee. I don't know who's on it. Offhand, you're on it?
I believe so.
I'm gonna refer right now.
Yes, I believe it is us.
Yeah, it sounds like we're gonna meet right now.
Well, we'll refer this to Chris and Nicole to come back and, and, and decide whether or not, um, this necessitates a change in the policy.
Okay, so for the next meeting?
For, yeah, for, for next, either the next meeting or, or August.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not throwing my, I'm not throwing a tantrum, I'm not putting my foot down. And if you wanna move forward with it, that's fine.
No, that part's not as important as the other part.
Let's make sure we do things above.
Proving the new seats.
I mean, me personally, I don't think that the future school committee in two years from now, whoever's on it, has to go back to minutes to determine what the actual policy is for school committee. I'm sorry, for school choice. It should be in the policy, district policy manual.
Bring it, bring a proposal.
Very good point.
Thank you very much. I occasionally get that. Once a year.
Hope it's more often than that.
All right.
Okay, and then, um... Is there tuition waivers that you need to do?
Well, I, are you looking to, so these two, we want to tell them to apply for choice. And if they don't end up as choice, then you can cross that bridge then, because, you know, waiving for a whole year.
I think that's gonna be a long discussion.
And then you, you, you know, kind of, if you do it for one, you have to do it for everyone, so what's the point of applying for choice? They're just gonna come before you and ask for a tuition waiver.
I think the preferable route, just since we're opening up the school's, is, uh, just school choice. Wellness policy revision, um-
So we're putting a hold on that.
So that's going to be tabled, um, until July or August?
Well, I don't know if the health advisory meets again. That, we wanted to update the, the data at the beginning that's rather, um, older. There's newer data available, and we wanted to add one other sentence specific to, you know, we don't wanna hinder PTOs for selling certain items when it's after the school day, so we wanted to add a little word to that. And the one change, I believe, which was when adding when scheduling permits recess will be held before lunch. I really am opposed to that because that is not in the student's best interest, so, um, that is fine. I have talked to the people.
To the people?
The people that met with George.
Oh, okay.
So-
Other school districts are still fighting to get recess before lunch, and we, we already over, we over, we went over that hurdle a few years back. And, um, I- And I found a little background as to why it was sort of evolving with a little bit of a flexibility there that I don't want in there.
Okay. So the policy committee have, uh, sorry, wellness committee have to meet again to do all of these?
Well, that's what I said, like, in terms of timing, your health advisory.
Health advisory.
Or whatever, yes, that's what that group is.
Yeah.
And you don't, you meet quarterly, so.
Do we need an emergency meeting? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, the thing is, the wellness policy does become part of the handbooks. So it is kind of, I mean, can I live with it the way it is? Yes, because it has the wording in that particular sentence that I want. I mean, without the change, we can change those other things, though. So, you know, I don't know, it's really you and Stacy and Joyce.
And Jeff.
Mya? I don't remember volunteering myself, however. We gave them all to you.
So, so let's see if they can work together.
All right.
So.
We'll see if you can get together. I know that Stacy already had some of the newer data we want to put in the front, and it's really just, it's probably a ten-minute meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Committee reports? Any committee reports?
A committee, yes, the, I'm sorry, I left my notes in the car. The wellness, um, I'm sorry, the health advisory committee met and they went over three policies. One, we just talked about wellness. The other two, the names escaped me at the moment, but there was no change recommended for either of them. I've got the info in my car if you really need it. But there were two policies that require an annual review, and neither required any change as far as the health advisory committee was concerned.
Okay. Any, uh, other committee or subcommittees?
Uh, well, I, we had a collaborative meeting. Um, I think the main, um, gist of it is that if you're not aware, they're, they're proceeding with the move to the Waypoint Academy to the Wing School in Sandwich. Um, and so we authorized a, a few expenditures relative to preparing the Wing School for this fall. So just think of all the things we have going on, but they're actually moving a school this fall, so.
Tonight, yeah.
So, uh, and then we just tried to, it was a heavy voting meeting because they were trying to dispense with everything for the summer. Um, and at the, at the end discussion, I sort of posed the question about how different districts are handling communications and engagement. That's something that I'm interested in and, um, curious about. And I relate to Patty that, um, you know, the schools that spoke up saying that they hadn't had much traction with surveys, that they want to work on engagement, that they've hired a data person, some, a lot of the schools around us have new superintendents, you know, um, we have the benefit of having stability there. We talked a little bit about district, uh, digital media and things and different tools that people have purchased. But the bottom line I wanted to convey is that I think, given the districts that voiced an interest and, um, desire to, uh, improve capacity in that area are all around us. Falmouth was, did not attend, so I can't speak to them. But, um, everyone else who spoke up, uh, was Barnstable, Sandwich, born, you know, um, all saying this is a shared issue. So I talked to Paul Hilton afterwards, saying, hey, you know, maybe this, there's a role for the collaborative here to help add capacity to, to certain districts. So I think we'll tackle that in the next fall.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
There was one other, one other thing I didn't realize at the last meeting, uh, when the budget that was voted on by the town, a town meeting included in there was a custodian supervisor position, making one custodian each building responsible for, the, the responsible person to go to. That was voted on or approved by the town.
Okay.
Ever come to that, a town meeting?
A town meeting, yeah.
So I think it's putting sort of like a person in charge of the shift.
A person in charge of the shift that, uh, the, we can go to as saying, this is who we go to, and it's not one of these, this, this, this type thing.
Okay.
That was recommended by Rodney.
That makes sense.
I have one more thing I forgot, the Indian education. So we met yesterday and, um, and so I, I need to have a letter written from, I guess, the district to Winnie, uh, the, the chair of the parent committee, saying that I'm the liaison to that committee and also the tribal liaison. Yeah, she wasn't aware that we had one before, so.
It's strange, because I told her, spoken to her directly.
Yeah, could have just gotten lost in the shuffle, but I think she just wanted some sort of official correspondence noting that. And then the last committee question I had was, uh, we got our, the, thanks for the list of where we landed, but how do we get the membership for the committees that were on?
Oh, I know what you're saying, so, yeah, so you're saying if you're on one with people from outside of the school committee.
Well, like our standing committees, for example.
Oh, oh, oh.
No, that I can see, maybe I have to go elsewhere.
Oh, okay.
But the four committees that are ours, how do I know who else is on the policy committee?
Doesn't it show it on that chart?
It wasn't on the chart.
It's on the chart.
It was on the chart.
It's only two people.
Sometimes there are committee of one.
It is me, though, at least for them.
No, 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 not which one of us, who else?
Who else within the school.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, so who's on the policy committee? I know I'm on it.
Me.
Krista Cole and.
Me.
It's typically us three. Typically, us two will meet with the superintendent.
No, it's not like, you know, well, anything related to health.
So for the policy committee to convene, you and I just.
It's just coming to my office, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they do all the medical policies, yeah.
Anyone can attend.
Anybody can attend the college.
Yeah.
That's definitely, I mean, that's definitely part of the policy, I mean, we should probably do it, that's true.
What's that?
Because there is the standing committees in there, and if it's, if it's, if we can get it by title, that it's the superintendent, the food service director, the school nurses, and, you know. We can add it to that, yeah.
So that exists somewhere.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't like granularity, I think we should add it, yeah.
Okay. For the uninitiated, that would be good.
That's a great question.
That's a good question, just show up and see who's.
Write it down, please, exactly, I can tell everyone.
Who are you? Uh, one other thing, the Mashpee Substance Abuse Task Force started, uh, and the first one was a week ago, uh, Tuesday, is an open house at the Community Health Center. It is staffed by, oh, the Gosnols, the, the treatment centers, um, it was about twenty-five different organizations there. And the first night was ruled as a success. Uh, there were several people that showed up, including one who was taken to a detox, or getting to a detox that evening. So, uh, this, that's going to happen the first Tuesday of the month. Currently, it is at the Community Health Center. It's getting, if it gets much larger, we're gonna have to find a different location. Pardon? On the paper, oh, okay, okay.
But the next one is July eleventh because of July fourth. It, it's usually the first Tuesday, but not in July.
Tuesday, it's going to be the eleventh. Uh, there's also a meeting tomorrow at the.
There is a meeting tomorrow. Are you going? Okay, thank you, because I cannot attend. It's the last day of school, I can't go to that meeting.
Pardon?
You want to remember the eight-thirty meeting?
Yeah, just gonna mention.
Okay.
Can you mention that?
Oh, we have a meeting tomorrow at eight-thirty. Uh, Mr. Funk, myself, Mr. Myers, Catherine Laurent and Rodney Collins to hopefully finalize the MOU for the facilities. We really only have, um, one little, I feel like it's back in negotiations today, we only have one little thing left to reach and understand. It has to do with, you know, rental of school facilities and funds generated from that. And our biggest concern is different pieces of equipment that we don't have control of when they're rented out. And then in the end, if they break, we have to fix them. So one idea Mr. Funk had too, which was good in terms of the auditorium, if we were to purchase a separate set of, say, microphones or headsets, that when someone rented that facility, this is what they're given, and it's a separate fee that we collect, separate from using the space. But if they then check off that box, and I do have some sample, um, forms from other districts that are nice, where they actually do control their schools, so they've developed the forms, and, um, maybe we can work with them to update the.
And that's a normal RFE thing when you get a, when you do a conference anyway, I mean, they charge all your visual fees, you know, and.
They, they.
They probably do now, too.
The, the problem is that those are kept by the.
Yeah, and I got you.
They're not remitted back.
Understand.
To the school, to the superintendent's point, if something breaks, so if this microphone breaks.
We just bought a whole bunch of them.
Right, but the town doesn't pay for.
Right, and I know, and, and they'll be used by whoever gets rented out, but, yeah, understood.
Exactly, or, you know, if they're using the library, using the desk, and they break a chair or whatever, you know.
Got it.
We don't get any sort of fees to cover that. And so it only makes sense that there should be some sort of insurance, some sort of charging, typically for a person using.
Yes, sir, concur.
So hopefully, last one, we get that one nailed down. And anything else needs to be brought?
Point of information, you may have done this at the last meeting. Normally, we set up a meeting of the school committee at what nights we're going to meet for the year, nearly early in the season. Did we do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I need a conference.
There, there was a calendar, I think that's already been published.
It was at the last packet.
Okay, I didn't get it.
Okay.
And do you all have the shared Google Calendar that Gail has set?
Yes, they finally got.
Because those dates, if they're not already on there, they, they will be on there.
I need to find a way to get it on my phone, too.
It's easy.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay.
I have something, something.
Yeah.
Because I haven't talked enough this meeting, but I had a, so I, I had the pleasure of.
Sure.
Moving a ridiculous amount of furniture and stuff around today, assisting some folks at the time, at the time of year. And I have to admit that I was very disappointed in the state of our furniture.
Yes.
And I don't know if, if we can discuss allocating some, some funds, I don't know if it can come out of school choice or not, but, I mean, I, I always defer to the administration. I don't want to get into the weeds and get out of my swim lane, but, I mean, there should be a minimum, like, furniture setup for each teacher, two bookshelves, a lockable cabinet and a desk, that every single classroom should have that's in workable condition. And I, I immediately was, I was not embarrassed, but I was disappointed in the, the, the different classrooms I saw today moving stuff around, how terrible our furniture is. Is that our, completely our responsibility to replace as a school?
Oh, you'd have to go for capital spending if you were gonna do it.
I mean, I, me personally, I have no, I'm sorry.
No, go, you finish.
I have no experience at all about how much it costs for a, you know, with the exception of Ikea, right? A, a bookshelf, you know, how much a bookshelf is, and I, you know, so I don't, I don't even know in my head the order of magnitude for how much this would cost. But I would love it, I know we have not discussed it one single time at any meeting in the last four years of in the committee about some kind of plan to replace furniture, and even the, the kids' desks and stuff like that, too, so that's my only comment I had.
And, and I know that some of the, um, town hall desks and, for adults, ended up over here, but I was up at the high school, and Mr. Balistraci ended up sort of replacing his furniture with something that was on the grass behind town hall. His desk then went to a teacher who still has his old one there, but when you looked at it, and it was original from the building, like, the, the edge of it had from Rikon, he says, it has wrecked every tie he's owned because of that. And so I do think we need to have a, a conscious effort to, um, replace. And then the other part about who has what and is there a standard expectation in a classroom? So Mr. LaBelle is fixing things up, but the way things have always happened in a school, that when someone leaves.
Oh, no.
The room is ravaged, and then the new person, there's nothing left for them because they take the stuff. So we need to go back, everybody is supposed to have a two drawer cabinet, a four drawer file cabinet, the door cabinet.
Yep.
But you can look in some rooms and it's quite different.
And I'm not gonna mention any names, but there was a, a metal.
Yes.
Like, uh, what do you call it, a locker, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That should, that, I've seen metal lockers at the bottom of swamps that were in better shape than this one. And there was a line of people that wanted that locker.
Waiting for it.
And I was like, oh, goodness, we have got to do something about this, so.
I will touch base with principals, because maybe there's a little last minute option, yeah.
All right, so let's.
Thank you, sir.
We'll bring that up at a, for a future.
Perfect, thank you.
If we take five more minutes, we can be exactly an hour behind. What do you think?
Someone must have another card.
Isn't there something else we can talk about?
Any other policies?
I'll be five minutes closer to.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
It's been a coup. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Sorry.
Standard adjournments, thank you.
That was a spectacular meeting.